Well, good afternoon, everyone. This is the April 25 work session of the Astoria City Council. And thank you all for being here. As you know, we recently approved a city council vision statement, which, for those who haven't had a chance to look at it, I'll just read it and then it'll actually be part of the presentation as well. But the Astoria City Council's action and decisions value preservation of Astoria's unique character, livability and quality of life for residents, a thriving local economy, and resilience as a community. And then we have a number of goals under that. And throughout the year, for the most part, unless a special topic comes up that needs to be dealt with, we'll focus most of our work sessions on some aspect of implementing our vision statement and implementing one or more of our strategic goals for the two-year period. And we've asked Chief Spaulding to lead a presentation today on the work of both briefly touching on the work of the Homelessness Solutions Task Force, which he has very capably led for a number, two years now, I guess, just about, a year and a half. And then diving into one specific issue under livability. So we won't be even remotely touching the entire topic of homelessness today, but just hit a couple of aspects of that. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Estes.
So Mayor, as you had noted, the council has passed a new set of goals for the next two fiscal years. And that city council vision, which you had just stated, is up on the screen. But we also want to highlight one of the goals specifically that applies to this work session, which is support the work and recommendations of the Homeless Solutions Task Force, as well as other community efforts to address homelessness. Our Chief Spaulding is going to touch a little bit on what the Homeless Solutions Task Force has been working on as a part of this, as well as go into some more specific issues, as well as our department heads, which are at the table before you this afternoon. I do want to note one other goal, which is a bit tangential, but I think it had a bit of a connection to some of the topics that were discussed today. And that was maintain Astoria's unique character in council decisions, including those involving growth, zoning, and economic development. A lot of this, the way I took away this goal, was dealing with livability as well. It's more livability in the built environment, but it's a goal which dealt with livability. And while what we're talking about here does not specifically deal with the Development Code or zoning ordinance, it does potentially deal with code amendments, which could address some livability issues and some ideas that will be brought forward, moving forward this afternoon. I do want to note that this work session is going to be maybe a little bit different than some of the prior work sessions, which were more, I'm going to call it free-form, open dialogue. There is a presentation, which will be given primarily by Chief Spaulding, who will be leading the conversation, but also the department heads who are before you are also going to be participating. We've been working to be able to bring information to you. We recognize that this is the city council's work session. This is not staff's work session, but we're wanting to be able to provide you with information, provide you with data, and provide you with some ideas to be able to dialogue. And hopefully, at the end of this time, we'll be able to have maybe a broader conversation with some direction you'd like to be able to provide in moving forward. So after the presentation today and after some direction, there may need to be some follow-up work sessions on touching on some specific issues. We're not looking at getting down into the weeds about some of the specific topics today. And if we're looking to say, council, if there's something you want us to touch on further, give us that direction. We just don't want to spin our wheels if there's a topic that you don't want us to look at at all. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Spaulding and let him get rolling on the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, members of council, Jeff Spaulding, your police chief. Appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation today. It's something we've been looking forward to quite some time. We really want to make sure, if we accomplish nothing else, that we put this issue in perspective. We all understand that this is a tremendous issue, not just for our community, but for all the communities throughout the state and throughout the United States, for that matter. So as the mayor has requested and we support and agree with, is that we will be briefly touching on the, you know, the work, some of the work the Homelessness Solutions Task Force is doing. But again, today's discussion is more narrowly focused on some of the behavior we're seeing from individuals in the community. So in order to convey that to you, what we are going to talk about today, or at least as part of our presentation, before we turn it over to you, would be talk a little bit about the host committee we're working on, some of the current programs, offerings that are available in the community today. You will then hear from each of the department heads, or most of the department heads, about some of the experiences that they're seeing. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the current state of the problem, talk about some of the challenges that we're facing, talk about maybe some potential solutions. And then somewhat very well-connected, but a little bit different, is the urban forest camping discussion as well. And I'd also like to mention that I also have my deputy chief, Eric Halverson, in the back room, and also Lieutenant Matt Phillips from the county. He's the jail commander, so he's only going to be here for an hour. So if there's any questions that are connected to this presentation, he'd be more than happy to answer those, but he will have to leave for another commitment in about an hour. So just wanted to make sure I call that out. So I think it's important that, as we're going through this conversation, that there's a recognition that we, as a police department, and the fellow department head team and city manager, all recognize certain guiding principles. For lack of a better term, that's what I'm calling them. We could call them default assumptions, whatever we want to call them. But these are some ideals that we all subscribe to, and I think at least we use these in our conversations to help guide our discussions. So first off, I'd like to say that the recognition of the problem deals with all behavior, not just individuals experiencing homelessness. Secondly, not all homeless individuals generate calls for service. Thirdly, individuals will not be targeted based on their housing status or any other protective status. Fourthly, holding people accountable can assist in directing them to appropriate services. And we talk about accountable. We're not necessarily talking about somebody that just may be standing on a corner, somebody that actually has done something that's called them to our attention, you know, committed a crime or a violation. And lastly, that we all recognize there are repercussions for inappropriate behavior. So obviously, if there's any discussion on that, more than happy to hear that. I'd also like to say that there will be natural breaks in between the different segments. So if there's questions along the way, you know, obviously, you can feel free to interrupt us at any time, but we also have a slide that'll be a natural break for that as well. So we talk about some of the current services and how well-connected they are. There's actually a lot of good organizations in our community. Some of the bigger ones, of course, Helping Hands, Clasip Behavioral Health, Clasip Community Action, and then we have other current services, the Clasip County Veteran Services, our warming shelter, the medication-assisted treatment, which is a little bit more new phenomenon that Lieutenant Phillips has had some experience in working kind of a hybrid model in the jail. It's something that they may expand at some point. And basically, this is the principle where you provide individuals medication to help alleviate the withdrawal symptoms from opioid abuse or other types of substance abuse. And then in conjunction, you support that with counseling and, what am I thinking here? Behavioral therapy. So it's a kind of a three-prong approach, and it's been very successful. And if you've seen the Seattle is Dying video, it was touched on in there, where they've had some experience of up to 90 percent success. Feeding empty bellies, North Coast Regional Substance Use Steering Committee, our homeless liaison, Kenny Hansen, most of you know, and of course, Oregon DHS. So some of the things that the Homeless Solutions Task Force are currently working on, and most of this is through subcommittees, which we found to be very effective. We've had conversations, some of these we haven't talked about yet, but the drop-in center. I know Rick and Elson, the audience, and they're very familiar with that. That's something that will be a presentation coming up with our group. Affordable housing, of course, is a big topic. The Home or Bound program, this is where people are connected to individuals in other communities where they live, and they have a better odds of success from coming out of the situation they're in because they have connections. So that's a program we'll be looking at. The Clean Slate Program, a lot of work has been done on that, and this is a program, again, that individuals can work off their debt, so to speak, and allow them to be better, have better opportunities to either get a driver's license, get employment. So that's a program that we're looking at. Then there's the Fuse Program, which is a frequent user system engagement, is what that means. It's a program that's been successful in Lane County that was modeled after several other communities. And in essence, it looks at individuals who are frequent users of the most expensive systems, including law enforcement, the courts, emergency rooms, and other types of social service agencies. And it targets those individuals with support and even housing to get them back on their feet to eliminate the draw on community. So I will turn it over to Chief Rutherford.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. It's my honor to speak briefly on the impacts of homeless on the fire department and our operations. And I've kind of narrowed it down to just a couple of highlights for you, and I'll go through that briefly. I first wanted to start with our core values in the fire department. This is important to us, that we treat everybody fairly, that we come in contact with it. It doesn't matter to us who you are or where you come from. Integrity, pride, compassion, and professionalism are the things that we strive for, and under compassion, it's sympathy for the suffering of others, including the desire to help. And that's anybody we come in contact with. The three things that I was really kind of able to hone in on for our biggest impact is the increased call volume for medical emergencies, camping and warming-type fires that in a lot of cases are left unattended. And then there is potential for people to occupy dilapidated or abandoned buildings. And I'll break up the next few slides and just go give you a little bit more detail on those three things. So under the increased volume for medical emergencies, I wanted to give you a quick explanation for what causes some of that, in my opinion, with my experience in the fire service. Environmentally, if they don't have a home, they don't have shelter, so they don't have the same protection that we have. And so if it's hot, or it's cold, or any of those other situations, that can cause a problem for people. With rain and wind and all that type of different weather situations are also a problem that can create hypothermia or any dehydration, those types of medical emergencies. Also nutrition, if they're not able to get enough water to drink or have the appropriate foods to eat to be healthy and to kind of feed their bodies, that can cause a problem and create a medical emergency. And also, another issue that can happen is if they don't have the means to get proper medication and be able to take that medication. For example, if they were a diabetic and they didn't have insulin and they didn't take it, it can cause their blood sugar to get out of whack, which would cause a medical emergency or cause seizures, things of that nature. Also, often, some of these individuals may have a mental illness, and if they don't have the proper medications to help control that, too, that can cause some issues for them. So many reasons for this to happen, I just wanted to give you a glimpse into a few. I'm working on capturing some better data, but I would estimate, right now, probably about 5 percent of our call volumes, about 5 percent of the calls we go on do involve a transient or homeless person. And I'm also estimating, based on some data that I have, about 5 to 10 percent of the time we're on a call, we are starting to see additional calls come in, so we're leaving one call to go to another call. And that's the reason why I kind of wanted to bring this point up, is with the increased medical calls, we're getting more and more call volume, which is tying us up, and then we're having to leave to go to additional calls. Occasionally, not all the time, but occasionally, some of these individuals can be or are impaired by an intoxicant. It could either be alcohol or some form of a drug. And occasionally, we also find, not always, but sometimes, they can be verbally or physically violent. And so in a lot of cases, for us, we will have the police department respond along with us to make sure the scene is safe prior to our entering. Not here, but in my previous employment, I have found, in many cases, weapons on some of the individuals that I've dealt with. And there's probably a reason for that, too. If you're out on the street and you may need to be able to protect yourself, I've seen knives and things of that nature. But for us, that can pose a threat to our firefighters, so that's something that we usually ask the police department to arrive first and make sure that it's safe. And then there are other reasons why, but in many cases, we are exposed to blood, vomit, urine, or feces with some of these individuals, especially if we're dealing with people at a campsite, is when you'll run into more of those types of issues. With the camp and warming fires that are left unattended, again, there's kind of a reason for it, I understand it. They start a fire to either stay warm, or they'll start a fire to cook or warm up food. But what we find sometimes is they're not identifiable, and so all people see driving by is smoke, and so they report a fire. So that generates a 911 call, which can be taxing to the 911 center, and then the fire department generates a response. And then often, we get there, and it's a pretty simple situation to deal with. But they can be in city right-of-ways or public property or private property, which can pose other issues. And if they leave it unattended, which we find occasionally, maybe in the morning when they get up to go about their day, sometimes it's left unattended, and it can spread. And we found those to spread and involve their camp and burn up their personal property in tents and things like that. And that could, with a hot day or wind-driven, you know, cause a significant fire, which could spread to property. And the last point that I kind of wanted to focus on was the occupying of dilapidated or abandoned buildings. I've seen where some have even rented storage units and moved into or lived in storage units. And again, to make heat, sometimes they'll start a fire, or if they get into an abandoned building, they'll start a fire to have warmth or cooking-type events. And those very easily, that's not how that's designed to happen, and it very easily can spread and cause a significant issue. The big issue is most of those buildings are not safe buildings to begin with for somebody to occupy. They don't have some of the same modern conveniences that most of us have with working smoke alarms and things that would alert us to a fire, which makes it very unsafe for them. The other thing is, for a fire department stance, our very first priority is life safety. So as we respond to a house fire, we're looking for clues that maybe somebody's there, their car's in the driveway, you know, toys in the front yard, things like that. So if we respond and we show up to a building that looks like this, our normal assumption would be that it's probably not occupied, which creates a hazardous situation for an individual that may have decided to occupy that building. And also, if we do become aware that somebody's in there, then it puts us in a situation where, you know, we have to make a life-or-death decision if we're going to go in there or not. And a building that is dilapidated and rundown already is very dangerous, and then under fire conditions, they don't hold up that long, and there's potential for collapse, which would danger, really endanger my firefighters. So that creates a very unsafe situation for all of us that would be involved. I just want you all to understand that we know that not all homeless people we encounter pose threats or any risks to us. And that was just a very brief, general overview of a couple of areas or issues that I was able to identify. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I guess the only kind of general question is that you are new to our community, and you've come from Coos Bay. And you've lived there all your, most, all your life, I think, prior to this?
Yes.
And I'm just kind of curious about the homeless situation in Coos Bay, whether you see some similarities to what we're experiencing here.
I do see similarities. And I, you know, I spent 43 years there, and I can tell you 26 years in the fire department. And when I started, we had about, you know, 26 years ago, there were about five homeless people in town, and they were local people. And most of them had a substance abuse issue. And they were out on the streets, but they were very polite and courteous when we dealt with them. And it changed to a more similar situation to, I think, what we're seeing here in Astoria, where there were, I would go so far as to say hundreds, when I left. Living in city parks, living in the woods all over the place, private property under bridges, they were in lots of places. And they were not local to Coos Bay. They had come, many of them had come from somewhere else, and they were not always pleasant to us or treated us very nice, even though we were there to help them. So that was my experience. We had storage units on fire, we had abandoned houses on fire, we had lots of brush fires that were camps that had been left, and the fire had spread. So I personally experienced these things in Coos Bay. I haven't experienced all of them here, but I suspect there's the same potential here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, what agencies in Astoria have the ability to administer, is it Narcan? Is that the anti-overdose?
Naloxone or Narcan is another name for it. The fire department, the ambulance carries it, and I would assume almost all police agencies are probably trained in carrying that now.
I mean, I know I saw some statistics in the paper recently, I think from Warrenton, with a pretty significant number, 39 in times they'd administered that. I'm not sure if it's this calendar year. Have we had any instances in Astoria yet of having to administer that?
I'm not aware of us in the fire department administering it since my arrival, but it's been carried by fire departments and the ambulances for years. And over the last couple of years, I think the police departments have been starting to carry it, too. I know the state police is carrying it, too. And for different reasons also, the police officers are inherently at risk of being in certain places and being exposed to certain drugs and other things. And so it's not only to maybe provide to a person or citizen that may need it, but also for their safety. They may come in skin contact with a drug that could harm them, so it's good for them to have for all those reasons.
Jeff Harrington, Public Works Director. I'm going to just cover some of the issues that Public Works deals with on cleanup. We primarily do cleanup of camps and security, unsecured areas around town. First of all, I'd just like to say that we're very concerned about both the safety of the campers and the workers in general. Based on the conditions we've seen, there's some areas that present some challenges safety-wise to do the work that we need to do to clean them up. So some of these are very steep areas, tend to be doing cleanups in a time of the year when we don't have a lot of dry weather. So their clay is wet and slippery, and we have, can potentially have trips and falls. So we have to be very careful. Sometimes you're carrying objects that are kind of awkward to carry. And then there's a needle danger. We have not had any incidents yet, but we're very careful about needle danger and safety with unknown biohazards, chemical dangers. And safety equipment, we've been needing to buy, you know, of course, more and more, and sometimes you have to dispose of it, which adds to the cost when you can't reuse it. Briefly talk about fire hazards, already been talked about, but two particular concerns for Public Works is one of our bridges at Irving and 39th Street is a timber structure. And we have found campfires underneath that bridge and been very concerned about that. You know, extinguished, of course, we weren't there during the fire. And then, of course, our forested areas are very dry in the summertime, very susceptible to wildfire danger if campfires are unattended. In town, that's not working, okay. In town, most of what we have to deal with is the chair wall and vaulted sidewalk security. And we've been spending, it varies in different years, but it's in the thousands of dollars to provide either new fencing or repair of vandalized fencing. It gets cut up occasionally. Some of it is private areas that are the property owner's responsibility, but we generally get the call and then have to assist with that. The intruders are cutting hardened steel locks to get into some of these areas. And the big concern when they get in is that these are, for the most part, confined spaces and have unknown dangers to the person going inside. And that could be sewer gas or lack of oxygen, for example. So when we go in to do any work in these utility vaults, we have equipment that we can test and monitor the conditions. And of course, we have a team, so there's someone on the outside that's tracking the staff that's on the inside in case something happens. And if you're not prepared for that, it could be a very dangerous situation, especially if an emergency happened. So some of these areas, we're seeing more and more repairs needed over the years. One last concern in the vaulted sidewalks is a water leak that could potentially flood an area. So somebody could break into an area, be in a confined space, and maybe be sleeping and have a water line break and be immersed. And then as far as staffing issues, it's, you know, camp cleanups, I've placed some volumes here for you, but even if you go back to 2016, these are smaller periodic cleanups, where now, just like with the last, the large cleanup last fall, it actually became a pretty big project, when you have to coordinate all the dumpsters and coordinate the people. We worked closely with the police department, of course, is taking the lead on that, but we're helping with the cleanup. So there's some numbers this year so far. It's actually not looking too bad, there's only been six as of April 5th. Any questions?
I'm curious, Jeff. We heard yesterday at a meeting with some of the merchants down on the waterfront regarding the waterfront bridges project, that some of the, some individuals have been breaking into the fencing where the construction is occurring. Have you heard about that happening regularly?
I've heard about it happening. That's why when they talked about putting that black fabric up, we weren't excited about it, because then you can't see what's going on in there. But, you know, the contractor, when the contractor takes over the project, he's in charge of that control, so we will have a talk with them about securing things the best they can. But there's, you know, like with our, like I said, we had hardened steel locks that get cut open, and if someone wants to get in somewhere, they're going to. I'm not sure what the attractant is, unless they're looking for tools or equipment and things like that. But we will talk to the contractor about securing areas and not leaving anything valuable that would attract someone in. Because yeah, of course, we're most concerned about the safety, especially when there's not a structure there anymore, and they can fall into the water.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council, and City Manager Estes. I'm Tim Williamson with the Parks and Recreation Department. I just want to kind of compare our situation. We, in this whole country, have this situation that occurs in every municipality and areas within the whole United States. And I'm really appreciative that we have this opportunity to present to you what we encounter here with the Parks and Recreation Department. We have not always been very good on tracking what we deal with the homeless in the Parks and Recreation Department, but this is a good awakening for our department to continue to document and track that and find ways where we can help and help with the homeless. Most of our encounters are on the riverwalk and in some of the parks, on outside facilities. It's very similar to what Public Works deals with, with the risk and the liability that comes along with cleaning up encampments. Most of the encampments are down on the, near Pier 39 in that area, that we've broken down a few over this past few months, that caused a lot of time consumption, takes people away from their jobs to do their parks work, because it's done by our parks maintenance crews that do that cleanup. We work closely with the PD when we encounter these things, so we can have those documented through the police department. The biggest issue that we've had is just the trash that's left behind in the parks. We have a lot of people that are homeless in cars and campers in and around our parks, mainly in our aquatic center. I don't know if you've been down to the aquatic center, but along Exchange and in the parking lot, sometimes you'll see campers that are there that are overnight. Most of the time, they're very harmless, very cordial. In the aquatic center, we welcome the homeless into the aquatic center because they're citizens of our city also. And we have a policy, when they come into our facility, that we treat them like anybody else. They come in and lift weights, they'll come in and swim, they'll also use our restrooms and showers. And the way that they pay for that is through our foundation scholarship program. We've had situations where homeless people have been belligerent and violent in that facility, but I would say more than 90 percent of those facility, but I would say more than 90% of those cases are very calm and very welcoming into the facility. We've had some complaints from customers on being in the same facility, using the same restrooms, the showers. Sometimes we have loitering within the aquatic center that we have to kindly ask them to move on. But we've had problems where people have locked themselves into a restroom in the locker rooms that they've either passed out or they're on drugs where we have to have police intervention. It can be an issue. It's remote. Most of the people that come in there are very cordial. They use the facility and then they go out. They don't hang around or loiter. I attribute the aquatic center being an attraction because of those shower facilities, those restroom facilities, and it's near the downtown area. Some of our other facilities, like the rec center, is so, it's more remote where we don't have those problems at the rec center. We've had a few encampments down at the rec center, but they've been handled with much Moving forward, we continue to hold our policies to allow the homeless to come into the facility and use our amenities there as long as they do that. Again, they get their, they pay for their fees through the foundation, which provides a scholarship for them. So I stand for any questions you may have.
I had a question. You mentioned a lot of the encampments near, over towards Pier 39 and along the riverwalk. Some of the feedback that I've heard from that ward constituents in that ward is just the lack of, they feel that's attributed in part to the lack of lighting in that area. Do you think that that is, are you, what's your perspective on that? Like if that area was well lit, would that help as a deterrent?
Yes, there are studies out there along trails across the country that that does deter homelessness encampments. So lighting is a key component to that.
Thank you.
Also, a lot of the areas on the north side of the riverwalk, on the water's edge, are pretty overgrown. I know some of those are private property. I think the Safeway property, they let their waterfront get pretty overgrown. And the George Brew property is pretty horrendous. But, and I'm not clear on which sections are city-owned park or city-owned land that goes right to the water's edge. And I know our contract for maintenance there just is basically lawn cutting. We don't do any clearing out of it. Sometimes between the trees, you get all that scrub that starts to overgrow, and before you know it, it's a thicket, which is a kind of a haven for camping.
I'm going to say, if you're looking at the area from the Maritime Museum headed east, the majority of the waterfront is privately owned. We own a 50-foot swath, 25 feet on either side of the rail line is city-owned for the riverwalk. But many times, there's private ownership of the bank line north of that rail, former rail right away.
The port over by the East End Mourning Basin, they did about a year, a year and a half ago, clear out their area pretty well. Just they left all the trees standing, but everything between the trees, which had been like 18-foot tall, underbrushed, they cleared that out. Have we ever asked any of the other private property owners to clear out?
We have. We actually conducted a cleanup of the area that was owned by the Maritime Museum, east of the maintenance shop, where, actually, there are city volunteers. I was out with a chainsaw with Mayor Lemire pulling brush out probably about four years ago. We have reached out to other property owners, like Mr. Brew, who has let us know that he was not interested in cleaning up nor having anyone come clean up his property.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we've also done some removal of Scotch broom out in those areas that are on our property. So we try to keep that down as best we can.
Yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilors, Mr. City Manager, and my fellow department heads. I'm Jimmy Pearson, your library director, and I'd like to talk about a couple of things. The first thing is exterior versus interior behavior. I have the building that is about a block and a half from the warming center, and I also have three covered all coves. So we have seen, as the picture set reveals, people come out of the warming center. I've witnessed this myself, and they come over to the library and they are essentially at the 10th Street entrance. It's a little bit larger. And for the most part, we have seen this type of behavior going on through the time the warming center's been open. We've also experienced some of the bodily fluids. We've had defecation at the back staff entrance, which I am not equipped to deal with in a proper way, given my experience in my past in the medical field. There's a perception surrounding the library, and I quoted an article written by our esteemed reporter Katie Frankewitz, and it's, Neil Moffett made a comment when they were discussing drop-in warming, or drop-in centers, day centers, that the library is one of the day drop-in centers for the community along with the hospital. And I've also heard more than one occasion, and actually heard it last night again from one of my department heads, that, or one of our department heads, sorry, that they don't, people don't want to bring their children to the library because there's a perception of the people that are present. It's frustrating for me because as I look at things, if I was a business owner, of course, that would drive down my revenue. We treat, just as the Parks Department or any other department, they are people coming in and using the library. They're library users. They, we have, you recently, I'll go on to the next slide. One of the things that we've done, and you've done recently, is updated our, we've updated our standards of user conduct. And that was not specifically chosen to address this type of behavior. However, did have input from my staff, including Megan Lynch, who is my head of circulation, who is the front line for the library. And in talking to her and observing the behavior that we've seen from all users, that gives us a little bit stronger, a little bit better tools in our toolbox to deal with any behavior. I realize after sending this to Chief Spalding that staff training is not the right term. It should be staff guidance. I'm coming from a system in Denver, Colorado, where we are able to use and have funds and hire social workers. They actually have two and a half now on staff. It makes a difference when you're out in the field and you have an issue, you can call them for guidance. And so I have had formal training on this issue, and I've passed what I have learned on to my staff. We treat everyone the same. I have, one of my staff members is a coordinator for the warming center, so that has served as a bridge. I myself have volunteered at the warming center to see them, but people see me in a different light. And we also have a positive relationship with Astoria Police Department. With my background, I understand the conservation of resources. So my staff, we don't reach for our phone when we have an issue. We deal with it on our lowest level possible before we escalate it. And thankfully, that has not happened or occurred that much with this kind of behavior. We have had one incident where the police were called, and it was not us that called it, it was another, it was a library user. And however, we would have intervened and called them if it escalated beyond our control. The library is a welcoming place for all. We're doing what we can to address this issue. I know that the city manager is going to talk about initiative that he may have with you, because when they're at the 10th Street entrance, I've spoken with the police about this, there's nothing I can do. We have witnessed people smoking marijuana. I don't jump to the conclusion that they're homeless right away. They're right out front in the doors. You smell it, you go out, you assume it is. We all know what it smells like. Tell them they can't do that there. There's loud music playing. I have heard feedback from staff in the mornings. I think that they varied their routes into City Hall from the city parking lot because they've been catcalled, they've been asked for money as people are walking by. So it is an issue, and I know that we're all working together and discussing it to better address it with, in the city and within the community. Subject to your questions, that is my presentation.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Mayor, members of council, back to me. One thing I forgot to mention earlier when we were talking about the host committee, and again, Mayor, you mentioned that, you know, we're going to have a brief recap on the host committee. But one of the things that's been the goal from day one is that we would have a slate of presentations to bring back to council at some point, and that still is on the horizon. So we're, you know, coming to fruition on several of the programs, and so there will be a presentation in the near future. So I look forward to bringing some ideas back to council as far as that goes. The other piece I just wanted to mention too about the homeless task force is one of the biggest values, especially for me, but I know for many others too, is just the relationships developed and connecting all the resources that we have in our community. I've learned a lot over the past year and a half, and I know many others have as well. So if we accomplish nothing else, the relationships that have come out of that task force, to me, have already, you know, paid dividends. So just forgot to mention that earlier. So as we look at the statistical side of things, in 2018, based on individual anecdotal comments from people in the community and then in my own organization, I had heard that, you know, many people felt over the past two to three years or so that there's been, you know, significant increase in the, what they perceived as the homeless population. So in 2018, in January of 2018, we actually started tracking calls related to homeless activity. And in part, we did this because we wanted to know, you know, if the data would support what many people are telling us and what some of the officers felt. And again, this is all not to target any one particular individual, because as I mentioned earlier, we don't, we can't say that necessarily because a person is dressed a particular way that that means they're homeless. So that's not what we're saying. But at the same time, that we know that some people are, and, you know, to better direct them into services and find out the extent of the problem and exactly what we're doing here today to update council on what we see as the increase in the problem. So in 2018, we started tracking the homeless-related calls for service. In 2019, we also started tracking the aggressive homeless calls for service. And I'm often asked, you know, what is the criteria for that? Well, it's not real scientific because it is officer discretion. Everyone then perceives it somewhat differently. And what may be aggressive to an officer is probably a much higher threshold than most community members. But my direction to them is essentially, if you, you know, have an encounter with an individual that is identified as being homeless, that goes beyond the normal compliance that we typically see, we want to record those. And again, the vast majority of homeless encounters we have, the individuals are compliant, they move on when the officer contacts them. But we started seeing an uptick in that and just a general feeling, and so we wanted, again, to see if the statistics would support what the officers are feeling and what some people in the community are telling us. So I don't have any data to compare this to because we only started just recently tracking as of January 1st. But I will tell you, we've had, so far, we've had 27 calls that were logged as being aggressive. Some of those, a couple of them were assaults, some of them are non-compliant behavior, some of them were fighting behavior, disorderly conduct-type things. So again, that's, I'm not drawing any conclusions out of that other than to say that's what we know with only four months of data. So looking at all calls for service, in 2018, we logged 349 calls for service related to homeless activity for the entire year. For this year, year-to-date, we've logged 334 calls for service, and that was as of yesterday. So we're not even in four months, and we've had about the same amount of calls as we've had all of last year. So the graph here, if you look at the graph, obviously, the light green color at the bottom is 2018, the orangish color is 2019. And for whatever reason, we're already seeing a significant spike in April as I think the weather's improving, maybe that's part of it. The remaining months of the year are projections. This is based on what we're seeing is a call volume of about 2.92, almost three calls per day. And so we projected those out for the remainder of the year. And I suspect that's going to be somewhat conservative. However, that remains to be seen. So again, if you look back at last year, our highest months were September and October. Again, I think those are probably some of our better weather months. So as we're looking at the data, all we can draw from what we're seeing here is that we've had about a 306% increase so far in the calls for service this year over last year. So that does not include the fire calls for service or all the calls that aren't recorded. In my conversations with people and even with some of the officers, we're finding that a lot of people are simply not calling us anymore on some of the calls or things that concern them. And I don't know exactly why. Some of the things we hear is that there's some concern that we don't have the tools to do what we need to do. There's also some concerns that we won't do anything. So we, unfortunately, I almost feel like we've come to the new norm, and, you know, that's not a place we want to be. Again, this is anecdotal, nothing to back that up scientifically, but that's part feeling and part conversations with people in the community. So this is our calls for service. So before I move to the next slide, I will ask if there's any questions on this particular slide or these calls, or I'll just keep pressing on.
I had a quick question, and this certainly may or may not be related to the homeless statistics, but has your department in general seen an increase in the number of calls for, like, personal property theft or people breaking into cars or things like that overall?
Good question, and I can answer that with the next slide.
Oh, great.
Good timing.
Before you move on, I have one question. Not counting for the aggressive calls for service, what are some of the other reasons that you get calls for service regarding homelessness?
I would say the vast majority of them are alcohol-related. I haven't done a real deep dive. I haven't gone through all of the calls from last year and the, you know, the 600 calls we've had to date. But in looking at the spreadsheet, you know, I can see, because they're broken down by type, some of them simply say "other," so that's why I got to dig in a little bit deeper. But a lot of them, I'm seeing a lot of trespassing-type violations, I'm seeing a lot of alcohol-related violations, there are some assaults in there. And trying to think what some of the other categories, well, I don't have it in front of me. But so that is something I'm going to produce at some point so we can find out, you know, get a little bit more deeper dive on that.
Okay. So alcohol would be, for example, people drinking in public?
Correct. And intoxication, of course, and substance abuse and those types of issues. And we also know, and actually talking to some of the individuals that we've encountered, that there's also a lot of crime, homeless amongst homeless, that is not being reported as well. So that's obviously a concern of ours, and we encourage everybody to report crime regardless of your status.
And I recall at the host meeting last week, you had your officer, and I apologize for forgetting her.
Yeah, Nicole.
Yeah, Nicole. So she gave a nice presentation, and she gave numerous examples of occasions where she's been out on one call and on the way, either to or from that call, has seen individuals publicly drinking or public intoxication. But she's had other things to do. She's had other police business that were pressing that has she prioritized on the spot to take care of. And the indication I got from her is that there are numerous other instances that would be logged as calls for service but aren't logged at all, just simply for lack of time to respond.
That is correct. And one of the things she mentioned too was just as one example, she was sitting there talking to some individuals, and as she's talking to them, I don't even know if they knew she was there, but they were intoxicated. One of them came up and punched the other one in the face right in front of her. And so, and we have lots of, it's not, most of them, it's all captured on the officer's body cam as well, so we have lots of examples of, you know, some, again, aggressive behavior.
Thanks.
So, Councilor West?
You.
So this, you know, I want to caution everybody that we're not drawing any conclusions from this because we simply don't know why the, you know, what the calls are. It's mostly conjecture on our part, but we're not seeing a significant uptick. Now, again, when most people say that the problem has increased, you know, substantially over the past few years, I've only captured data so far back to 2016. I do plan to go back further at some point. But right now, we don't have any significant trends as far as increases. Actually, 2017 was a lighter year, and then 2018, it was a little bit bigger again. And then so far, trending for 2019 is actually slightly lower than 2018 if it continues at this rate. So the green area is property crimes in general, and then the orange area is the unlawful entry of motor vehicles. So this includes your break-ins and open vehicles and breaking windows and stealing things out of cars, et cetera. So we're seeing, you know, it's about, in 2016, it was 43 calls for the vehicles, 72 calls in 2017, 65, and then 15 so far this year. But overall, we're averaging probably in the high 500s for all property-type crimes. And again, these are just the ones that we know of that were reported to us. So there's no conclusions to be drawn from this data that it's connected to anything. We do know that it's typical in most jurisdictions that a lot of the property crimes are related to individuals who are using substances unlawfully to support the habit. And some of the homeless individuals, many of them are also substance abusers. But again, abusers, but again, not suggesting that that's as a result of the homeless population.
Thank you.
So looking at overall, the calls for service, and just doing a little bit of a comparison here, the Astoria Police Department has seen a 13% increase in calls for service between 2017 and 2018. For us, for a small department, that's significant. That's going from the low 14,000s to a little over 16,000, and again, that's a huge jump for us. To compare that, the Sheriff's Office has actually seen an 8% decrease, and then Warrington has seen a 24% increase. Now, talking to the chief there, that's in part due to Walmart, and there's some significant growth in their community, and a couple other factors, including some couple of new officers, that they've now got their staffing improved. But oftentimes, well, not oftentimes, these calls for service include all calls, so this is either officer-selves-generated or it's also calls that are citizen-based. So when our staffing improves, it's not unusual to see the numbers go up a little bit, and conversely, like with the Sheriff's Office, their staffing has actually dipped a little bit over the last year, so they're seeing some of their calls go down. So that's only a partial explanation, but that does seem to make some sense in terms of when we look at the numbers. When you look at our increase in the calls related to homelessness, that is a factor of our increased calls for service, so I will say that. So as moving forward on some of the challenges that we're seeing, part of it is just a system. Court appearances, we're talking to Judge Kino in our municipal court, he tells us roughly only 5% to 10% of individuals that he would consider that are homeless because they don't have addresses are showing up in court. So obviously, over 90% don't show up. So this obviously generates a failure to appear, which has a higher fine assessment, and otherwise, if they had shown up, the judge has some limited ability in terms of assessing fines for indigenous people, so it's entirely possible that they may not have even received a fine. So part of that, I think, is an education piece. Jail capacity, as Lieutenant Phillips would tell you, that the jail right now is only able to house so many people, and because of a Measure 11, they keep the most serious offenders in that facility, and most of them are Measure 11, and then they matrix out or they're based on a chart based on the seriousness of the offense. Most individuals that we take to the jail do not stay there any length of time. In many cases, an officer will take an individual to the jail, and they will simply cite them and release them after being booked. So, again, it's not a fault of the county, it's just simply a capacity issue. Some of the other things, when I talk about challenges, there's constitutional challenges, higher court rulings, such as we've been to relatively recent decisions out of the Ninth Circuit Court, that's impacted our ability to enforce camping. We still do have some ability to enforce it, but we're kind of taking a wait-and-see approach as far as enforcing the individual. It does not mean that we can't deal with the urban forest camps and actually removing those, but that's a conversation we'll have towards the end of the day. And then there's been other challenges, constitutional, and I put this little clip here, which I thought was interesting, the Sixth Circuit, which does not necessarily impact us, but they determined that chalking tires to enforce parking rules is unconstitutional. So just kind of the direction where some things are going, so I think we're going to switch to crayon. So, moving past that, so mental health resources are limited, options for substance abuse assistance are limited, limited shelter option, limited resources in terms of city employees to deal with this, and again, limited tools in terms of what we can do. And that's a segue into proposed tools. So, for the most part, you know, I've talked to a lot of our officers and asked them, what do they need to be able to better do their job? I will say that there is a lot of frustration because it's a revolving door. They go from one place to the other, especially in the evenings, move people if they get a call, and simply they just come back again, and just limited ability to enforce or come up with solutions to eliminate the problem. So it's just, they're frustrated. There's some things that we've looked at that other jurisdictions have used, some of them, many of them successfully, as we appreciate the most recent, the unlawful transfer ordinance, which will address a small portion of some of the concern we've seen with traffic safety. There are some alcohol-related ordinances that other jurisdictions had used. Right now, if an officer observes somebody with an open container, that they have to actually observe them actually consuming alcohol. So many agencies or jurisdictions have it, whereas just simply the possession of alcohol in public is a violation, and that would give us the ability to contact that individual, decide if an officer wants to use discretion to take enforcement action or not. There's obstruction ordinances, such as we get frequent complaints about individuals with their worldly goods that are blocking sidewalks or blocking other public thoroughfares and interrupting the flow of individuals into businesses. And that's the way it's characterized to us. So there are some ordinances that we could look at, that we could help address that issue. Probably one of the biggest ordinances or programs that some agencies have used and with success, I will say Bend, Medford, Ashland, I think it is, Ashland, is using exclusion zones. So in essence, the zone is determined by an area that's seen frequent problems. And, for example, they would pick the Riverwalk or the downtown area. And individuals who are in that area who are frequent flyers and commit numerous offenses would be given citations or warnings, and if they amass a certain amount, and that can be determined by the ordinance, such as two or three over a certain period of time, they could be excluded from that area. There are also some offenses, because of the gravity of the offense, it would only take one offense, such as a serious assault or a sexual assault, those types of crimes. So if somebody has been determined they've been excluded for that zone, they would be excluded for anywhere from 90 days to a year. It's different depending on the city. And if they are then contacted, or they come back into a particular area, they would be subject to being arrested, which would now be a misdemeanor-type offense, and they could be taken to jail. Again, I'm not saying that they're going to be kept at the jail, but it is a higher-level offense, and they've had, other agencies have had success. Probably one of the downsides to it, it is resource-intensive. I can tell you that DOWS has just about, was about ready to roll out the program, but because of limited resources, they put that on hold. So that is a downside, because there is some tracking and management of the program to make sure that it works and contacting individuals. Again, it sounds like it's a focus on enforcement, and part of it is, but again, it's also a matter of looking for alternative ways to encourage people to, you know, not do the bad behavior. So we're not looking to write citations, arrest people, we just want to reduce the amount of complaints and calls for service. Alternatives to enforcement, so it's just looking for creative ways to find alternatives to issuing citations, taking people to jail. We plan to do more research on that. We do know that some agencies have had some success with programs that actually involve the individual that they're contacting and making them part of the solution and rather part of the problem, such as cleaning up or being responsible for an area that they've messed up, so to speak. So, you know, that's something that we're very interested in exploring. The last category I put here is the crime prevention through environmental design, and many of you are familiar with this concept. And this is where law enforcement, fire personnel, what have you, get involved in processes of new facilities that are being built. But it also means that we are looking for creative ways dealing with business owners to minimize the temptation for individuals who are prone to either theft or other types of activity. At this point, in talking to the city manager, he would like to chat about a couple of these topics under this category, then I'll come back to the ones that you don't do.
Sure. So the first item I want to talk about is with regards to the set of picnic tables, which is on the backside of Heritage Square adjacent to the American Legion. We have seen an uptick of individuals who use that area, but it's become a place where our police department is having to respond to frequently, and we're having complaints from the Legion Hall, downtown merchants, and people who are in that area. This is a city-owned piece of property, which is maintained by the Parks Department, and it's my intent that I'm going to be providing direction to Mr. Williams to have those picnic tables removed from Heritage Square. It's become an issue that continues to be problematic, and I feel it's necessary to take that action. Also, I want to mention the Property Watch program is something that our police department put in place a couple of years ago, which allows for property owners to sign up in case that there are individuals who are in their alcoves of their businesses on private property. Allows the police department to be able to go and gives the police department the right to be able to go on private property to remove those individuals who are in those alcoves. While the City of Astoria and the City Council supported the creation of this program, the City of Astoria itself never signed up for this program. It's my intent that I will be signing up all city facilities for this program as well, so that this will remedy the issues that Mr. Pearson has discussed with individuals who are putting themselves on the front porch of the library and causing some concerns to passersby or to library patrons or people who are going by in the morning before the library is opened or staying there overnight, as in the back door of the library itself. So I wanted to let the council know that I was going to be moving forward on taking these actions to be able to address these issues.
So, picking up on the stepdad again, so again, working with business owners and finding creative solutions, you know, working with them to eliminate or at least minimize some of the issues we're having. For example, working with like some of the grocery stores that have frequent thefts, or the mini-marts, and finding ways to make it less easy to take alcohol, because that's a significant problem. Maybe even working with, for example, Safeway and finding ways to use some of the systems that are available out there to make it so the shopping carts can't be taken off the public lot there, those kinds of things. There's a lot of examples out there, working with the business owners and, you know, making it more difficult for some of the crimes to occur. And the same thing goes too with our private owners too, their vehicles, encourage people to secure their vehicles. You know, we hate to create an element of fear, but at the same time, we don't want to make it any easier for some individuals to break into the vehicles. The last one example on here, I only put this on here because it's more recent, but I got a letter recently from the security at Tongue Point Job Corps, and they're very concerned about their students because they're fearful of getting off at the bus stop over there, 16th and Duane, because there's individuals that are frequently sleeping there or staying there, and they don't feel comfortable getting off the bus stop. So this, I'm not even 100% up to speed in terms of the ownership of this, but I understand it's Tongue Point's bus station, but it's city property, so working with them, giving them more ownership of the property, and then we could probably even do something like a Property Watch program on the bus bench. So there may be some alternatives, just again, looking for creative solutions to addressing some of the issues that we're experiencing. Oops, overshot. Have a little reverse clicker? Okay. So I think, at this point, I'm not sure, we're missing one. Well, I'm missing a whole slide. So this is the point where we're going to start talking about the urban forest camping discussion. Is it a good time to take a break or ask questions, or want to move forward on that topic as well?
I think we can move forward.
All right. And I'm just going to go through here, see if I can find the missing slide.
Yeah, the missing slide is on the handout.
Okay, then I'll just go off of my slide here, and then see, statement, statement, So as you are all aware, last summer, we spent a fair amount of time working with some of the urban forest camps that were in several locations throughout the city, and these were based on citizen complaints. We addressed the issues, and I think they were successful from a perspective of using many social service agencies and not just a police enforcement-type approach, and we're able to, you know, using classic community action as one example, and partners with recology and what have you, we, you know, we addressed the issue. There was a lot of lessons learned from that, and we do know that the problem has not gone away, and this is something that we are going to have to address again this summer if council so chooses. I will tell you, the slide that's not up here right now, why we are concerned about this, and then I'm going to go into what we perceive anyway as some of the pros and cons to moving forward as we get into the better weather. So from a concern perspective, there's the public safety concerns, some of the camps, their proximity to the pipeline, the gas pipeline, which has broken at least once that I'm aware of, and we're not able to alert or notify people if something were to happen. We do get calls, complaints from joggers and hikers as they're walking through there, and they see individuals that make them feel nervous. It's our inability to provide public safety services. I can tell you that we've had some calls where we had a domestic violence-type incident last summer. We had another incident where a homeless gal had actually slid down the hill and injured her ankle, and we weren't able to locate them immediately. So by the time the officers located them, they were fairly deep into the woods, and they were about 10 minutes from their car, so it takes them away from providing emergency services to somebody else in the community as well. So that's a problem from us, not only from an officer's perspective, the rest of the community, but also being able to provide those public services, not just the law enforcement services, but also the fire services when it's really difficult to identify exactly where they are. We also know, and this is even information that we've received from some of the individuals we've contacted up there, that there's a fair amount of crime occurring in these sites, and most of it avoids detection because it's not reported. So, but we have had, you know, deaths amongst some of the individual camp owners up there, some of the, we've had domestic violence, we've had some assaults, some sexual assaults, so we do know that that's occurring. And again, it makes it really difficult for us to be able to police that. From a citizen-concern perspective, some of the things that we hear, especially those that are backing up to some of these wooded areas, are substance abuse issues, fires, thefts. We've had propane canisters taken, furniture taken, gas containers taken, the human excrement, and the animal-related issues. There's obviously the concern that they're not being properly nourished, but there's also the no leashes, vaccinations, and no licenses. So those are some of the concerns that we hear from the community. So on the slide here, just as, so this is just one illustration. This is just one area of town that we addressed last year. There was two others in addition to this. This is off of Navy Pipeline Road. There was, I think there was 11 camps in this particular area. So you can see, it's not easy to get to any of these. Obviously, it's hilly terrain, and especially when we've had a rain, it's very dangerous, as you've heard from two of my peers. The other two areas that we addressed last year were over by the Alpha Taylor, near the former RV dump site, and then also behind the Columbia Memorial Hospital. We've had a few encampments up there as well. So some of the advantages to addressing the camps is it's, we're being responsive to the people that are calling us and have concerns about the public safety. We're addressing some public health concerns, safety of the hikers and joggers, safety of the individuals staying in the camps, fire safety, and moving individuals into resources. I will say, we did have some limited success in terms of everybody that we actually contacted was given a resource guide, and a member from CCA was with us and contacted them, and we directed them to these services or to Helping Hands. I think we only had a couple people, but if we impacted two people, then that's better than nobody. Some of the downsides to addressing these problems are the time it takes from staff, not just the police department, but from fire, Public Works, parks, everybody else that's involved. It is somewhat resource-intensive. There is a staff safety concerns. I won't go into that, because that's been covered by Public Works. The response time is impacted when we're not near our police vehicles and our officers are up there working on camp cleanups. The actual cleanup itself is time-intensive. There's the financial impact in terms, fortunately, last time, recology provided the services without charge, but we don't suspect that's going to last forever. So there's that. The storage of personal property, we, some of the property may have some value. We have very limited facilities to store the property, and there's issues in terms of determining- of determining what's property of value. What may be something that we feel is of no value to us may be valuable to somebody else and that's hard to make that determination. But oftentimes we, what we run up against is clothing type items that are moldy or wet, food items, camp equipment and those kinds of things. Some things are obviously clearly of value and we would retain those, but even some of the tents, it makes it very difficult to store those types of property. So there is always a potential litigation that somebody could take an action against the city if they felt that we disposed of some of their property that they assess a higher value than we would have. And lastly, and we've heard this, that we may simply be relocating people deeper into the woods. So that's what we have identified as the cons. So that concludes the presentation and let's see here, anything else to add? I think that's it. That's all I have.
So Mayor, at this point, the idea was as if council, you know, had any kind of general follow-up questions, you know, please direct them to staff and, you know, provide an opportunity to be able to have some dialogue from council with regards to some of the items put on the table today and some of the ideas to possibly investigate in further into the future.
Well, thank you, Mr. Estes. Thank you, Chief, and thank you all, department heads, for your very thorough briefings and thank you for the work you continue to do. And, you know, I want to emphasize that the vast majority of the community's efforts, when I say community, I don't just mean the City of Astoria government, but the community and its organizations. The vast majority of the community's efforts towards homelessness in our community is towards assisting those who find themselves homeless. And I particularly cite, thank Elaine Bruce for being here today from Clatsack Cooney Action, your organization, and Rick and Nell who volunteer at the Astoria Warming Center and others here for the volunteer work or paid work that you do in your organizations to assist those who are suffering from homelessness. And that, you know, needs to continue to be the overall thrust of the overall community effort. And I appreciate all that the departments and your staffs do as you've outlined in this very concise presentation of all that you do on an ongoing basis to assist people. And I know the vast majority of what the police does is to provide assistance and guidance and direction to where services can be found. You know, nonetheless, there's clearly a perception and a growing perception in the community that a small minority of people whose behavior the chief has outlined today have, that the city, there's a perception that the city has turned a blind eye towards the behavior of the small minority of people who have abused their position in the community to engage in either abusive behavior or other activity that just is unacceptable. And particularly as we've outlined our vision statement, which focuses on not only a thriving local economy, which means supporting our locally owned small businesses that are, some of which are represented here today, but livability and quality of life. So the question is, you know, how do we balance the much needed work of community organizations and the city to direct homeless people towards those services that are available while at the same time ensuring a quality of life for our Astorians and helping our local businesses not be negatively impacted by the misbehavior that the chief outlined today. And so I think some of these potential solutions that have been provided are very appropriate and worth some, I'm looking forward to the discussion to provide that balance in the community.
I guess, I guess the presentation, I appreciate it, certainly left me feeling frustrated and a little helpless. As you so ably pointed out, there are limitations on what we are legally able to do and I think we need as much information as we can get about what kind of legal remedies we might have. At the same time, we're recognizing we have such a shortage of available services and in fact, there's a story in the paper today about another service provider in danger of closing down. I volunteer at the warming centers, so I, you know, I have that feeling of there, but for the grace of God go I. And I have empathy for the people who are there and yet, you know, I see, as you pointed out, it's a tiny percentage of people who are aggressive and difficult and the other homeless don't like them either, you know? It's a problem for them, crime wise and everything else. Trying to get a grasp on this though, as you pointed out, you can arrest someone and send them to jail, but there, there's no real, that's not really a remedy because we don't have the jail space. We don't, that's a low level crime that doesn't, doesn't hit the meter. I don't know that we have any way of compelling someone who has a drug problem or an alcohol problem to have treatment. I'm just not sure where we go with this. I'm just totally, I appreciate the remedies you put out there. I think it's easier sometimes for those of us in the public who feel that empathy to be able to shrug it off if, for example, you know, somebody camps in Pete's vestibule there when the business is closed. But if that same group of people were to set up camp in my driveway or my garage, I might feel differently about that. And I'm just feeling very helpless right now. I don't know where to go with this.
Well, I, I'll speak a little bit. And I also want to thank everybody for being here, in particular, the department heads that I think are dealing with this in the best way that all of you know how, as well as your staff. And I want to echo a lot of what Mayor Jones said about, used a word and that was balance. And I think in attending host meetings and talking with the community, I don't want to pin these two things against each other, but there was a point that came up at the host meeting from someone at CBH who said, you know, if you build it, they will come. And I recognize that that is a valid concern. I would agree with that. And then kind of on the other end of that, the question that I get a lot and even for myself is that, you know, if you exclude someone from a particular area or even removing something like a bench, I'm not saying I disagree with that, but it's just where people supposed to go. You know, it simply relocates them. And I'm also a downtown building owner who's experienced some of the issues that Pete Gimray has, has also experienced. So it's, I'm hoping that the answer is somewhere in the middle where we can find a way to support the efforts of the populations that do work with the homeless community and recognize that simply moving them on, I don't think there's anybody here that thinks that that's a solution. But also certainly not enabling individuals either or looking the other way, which again, seems to be somewhat of the perception of the city as far as behavior that's unacceptable by anyone in the community. So, yeah, I just, I want to continue to talk about this and to look at potential solutions. And again, I'm hoping that the answer is somewhere in the middle. I do, the discussion of the drop-in center comes up a lot in the need for it. And again, that argument of, you know, if we create a drop-in center, are more people going to come to Astoria to utilize that? But then recognizing that people consider the library to be the drop-in center, which is kind of the other end of that argument because of course, we all know that that should not be the case. So, I don't know, that's kind of the dichotomy that I struggle with or I'm looking at.
Oh, I guess I would just add along those lines about wondering whether you create an attractant or not. I do wonder sometimes if we had something like a drop-in center or we had a place in the community where we could say, here's where you can go and set up your tent and so on. I know a lot of people say, well, wow, you really are, you really are creating an attractant then. But I wonder if we had such a place, whether we could accompany that by saying, since this place exists, you can't camp in the woods.
Yeah.
That's no longer something that we will permit.
We already do prohibit camping on public property
Right.
in the city.
And for the record, I mean, I do support a drop-in center. I do think that there is a need and I think that people do need a place to go. I've lived in other places where they've had those and they've been successful in the sense that they create more visibility, I think, for individuals that need services. So it is, in a sense, a way to get folks into the door that might then be reintegrated into housing, which I know, again, it's Elaine at Clatsack Community Action in speaking with her, the vast majority of the homeless population that they work with, you know, we don't even see because they are successfully putting them into housing and things like that, which is really important. But yeah, I would, and I know this isn't about a drop-in center, but that's just one example of, I think, where there's something, where there is a need. And of course, that brings up the questions of, well, where would it be? And we don't want it next to this and...
Right.
So...
Could we go to the slide that has proposed tools as the header? I don't know who has the master. So I know the city manager would like to get specific guidance from council, which we obviously don't vote at work sessions, but we can give guidance on whether we're interested in having him pursue certain ideas. So that's our sort of, the target today is before we leave, that we've given guidance to the city manager on how to proceed on these proposed tools. But normally at work sessions, it's just internal deliberations and we don't open it to public comment, but there may be some people here today that wish to public comment. So I would say now, before we give specific guidance to the city manager, if there are people who came today who would like to speak for no more than three minutes, we don't have a mic set up, but you could come up.
Actually, we can, if you would, Mr. Williams, you can take that microphone out of the holder and we can pass it on.
Yeah, so if anyone would like to speak, I would just ask you hold your comments to no more than three minutes.
And Mayor...
I'm sorry, Joan.
Oh, that's all right. First, I thank you all, department heads, for your really informative presentation. And I do want to thank everyone here. I really would like to hear from all of you, if possible. I mean, we probably don't have time today, so I'm hoping we can do another work session perhaps. This is such a big issue facing our community. The city doesn't have a big pot of money despite what a lot of citizens think. We just finished our budget process and that really brought that home to me. And I'm not, I'm going to ask this question and it doesn't indicate that I feel one way or the other, but there has been a lot of discussion just in the community. We're moving people out of the woods and other illegal campgrounds. Does that, and we're spending tens of thousands of dollars. I'm guessing that's probably not an exaggeration between Public Works, police, all the calls that you just outlined, Chief Spalding, that the police are making and Chief, the fire chief as well, Deanna, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting your last name right at the moment, and Tim and Jimmy. So we are spending a good amount of money for our community. I'm guessing that's not an exaggeration. A lot of people think we should have, not necessarily in the city limits, because we don't have nearly as much vacant land as the unincorporated areas surrounding Astoria. Is it time to have a legal campground? I'm just throwing that out there and I'm curious, particularly Chief Spalding, what you think about that idea.
Sure. Well, first off, I will say that, you know, in terms of the cost, you're right. I mean, it is expensive, you know? One thing though, much of what we see is soft costs. It's part of what we do. It's part of our job. But at the same time, I will say that it takes us away from other things that we could be doing that are more positive for the community. I'd love to have my officer spend more time walking up and down the downtown of the River Walk and, you know, communicating and having interactions with the public and positive encounters, rather than spending times dealing with these 300% increase that we've seen. So, you know, we haven't done that calculation because again, it's, there is overtime involved and there are other costs and again, you know, with the cleanups and what have you. So I don't know what that number is, but to me, it's more of how it's impacting other services that we're not able to provide. As far as the, the answer to the question about, you know, a campground or somewhere else to stay, I'd love to be able to provide services for individuals. I will say that at least what I've seen over the last year is there's no one size fits all. And as we're having this conversation, I recognize that individuals experiencing homelessness, you know, fall into different categories. And I may not hit them all, but we talked about mental illness, substance abuse, housing shortages, someone who's truly just fallen down their luck. But then we also have a small percentage of that population that truly like the way their life is and they have told us that they don't want to change, they don't want to follow the rules. Those are the ones that obviously are creating a lot of the calls that we're seeing. I just heard from a county employee the other day that she's one of the ones that said her kids won't go to the library anymore because they're using foul language and actually heard them badmouthing Helping Hands, you know? And these are the people that are trying to help these individuals. So, I mean, I do believe there's a certain element that I don't know that we will ever be able to reach, you know? But again, it helps us, it helps us as a police department if we get people into services, we get people back into productive lives. That's a positive. That means we no longer have to respond to those calls. So we support any program that can do that. So I know I'm being intentionally vague,
No, that's okay.
but I will say this is somewhat a little bit of a personal commentary. I'm not convinced that building a camp or doing some of the things we've talked about will not encourage other people to come to our community. And I know that's a sentiment of a lot of people in the community. I hear that often because, you know, why is it that Astoria has a bigger problem than maybe Cana Beach or some other problems? Because we have services and part of it, we have a very compassionate community and we have a lot of people that, you know, have big hearts and I appreciate that. But I also think we have to be careful and guard that growth.
Thank you. And just one last brief comment before we open it up to public comments. I recognize that most of the homeless individuals in our community are not causing the problems that are being discussed today for the most part. I support fully not tolerating behavior that is illegal, that is aggressive. So I just want to put that out there. I don't, you know, we can be compassionate and yet not tolerate that small percentage of behaviors that creates the majority of the problems.
Thank you.
Thanks, counselor. So now if there is anyone who would like to speak, the microphone is there, just raise your hand. Pete?
I don't know if I need a microphone. Pete Gimray, I own Gimray Shoes and I agree with what everything's been said up here. Roger, you say it best, it's a complicated situation and there is no simple answer to it. As a business owner, it's pretty well documented what's happened down at our place. What's disheartening most to me is when I have customers who come in the store and who say they don't come in, they don't want to come downtown nearly as often because of the aggressive behavior that Joan mentions. It's not because of the way someone looks or the way someone's dressed, it's because of aggressive behavior. It's hard enough in today's world to run a retail operation. Nothing means more to me than my own family than my employees. It's tough when I'm trying to provide good wages, a 401K, good reasons to be in, good reasons to want to work for Gimray's. It makes it harder over time when you've got less foot traffic coming in the store because people simply don't want to come downtown like they have in the past because of the aggressive behavior. So, you know, it not only affects us individually, but it affects commerce through town because of what's happening. So anything that can be done, I'm highly appreciative of. I've talked to Chief Spalding, I've talked to everyone in here about the issue. There is no simple answer, but Jimmy, we've had, I can relate to the problems you're having over at the library because we've had those same problems at Gimray's. And I agree, you just can't push one problem down the road, but it is affecting businesses downtown and it's very easy to say, well, I don't care about that business. Well, you got to think of the employees that are involved in that business where it really does... it really does affect them. So I just want to put that out there.
Thank you.
And if you are speaking, keeping time, so I'll raise my hand when you have about 10 seconds left.
David Ozer, 254 West Irving. Language is powerful, and when we describe this as a problem of homelessness, we're lumping a whole different, a lot of categories together. I want to focus on the one category that Chief Spalding mentioned, of the people who have chosen a life of not having a fixed abode. The language we use to lump them in with other homeless people does most of the homeless people a great disservice. We shouldn't use the word homeless to describe these people. We should call them vagrants. We should call them travelers. We should call them transients, people who are not part of our community. And the solution, or at least part of the solution for them, is to support and provide the police with as many tools as is allowable to enforce the laws, so that our community's compassion and help can go to the people who want help, who can benefit from the services that we provide, and who are in fact harmed more than perhaps anyone else by being lumped together with this cohort.
David Reed, 4924 Cedar Street, and Director of the Chamber of Commerce. The economy of Astoria, and in fact of all small towns, is fragile. There's lots of pressures on it, and so anything that we do that allows fewer people to feel comfortable coming to the downtown area, or anyplace else, really has a huge effect. And that effect ultimately leads more to the spiral of the problem. You have fewer people who have incomes, you have fewer people to help out with paying for resources, whether they're municipal or whether they're private. So protecting the economy is important. A dead downtown is a dead town. So whatever we can do to protect downtown in particular, but all businesses, from yes, antisocial behavior, but also just honestly, somebody walking down the street, a visitor to our town, who comes across a bunch of people sitting in a doorway perfectly legal, perfectly kind, they're still going to move to the other side of the street, they're still going to avoid the businesses next to that. So an issue, you know, it's deeper than just what we're talking about. I would encourage the council to stop looking for a solution. If that's what you're doing, look for, there will be multiple small solutions, each addressing different parts of this. But please be mindful of the economy and the fragile nature of it.
No one else? Okay, thank you very much. So, Mr. Isis, I guess, would it be useful just to go through, just hit each tool one at a time, just give us a brief overview again, and then we can have discussion?
Sure. Chief, do you want to kind of go through each one of the tools very briefly?
Sure. So just starting off with the alcohol-related ordinance, this would be a relatively simple change. We would just bring a proposal back to council to approve the ability to enforce the alcohol, not only consumption, but also the possession, which I believe was original intent. So that would be a relatively easy modification, and that is consistent with a lot of jurisdictions we're doing now.
And no unintended consequences to that, that I can, that you can foresee to local businesses, or, I mean, currently, you're not a, if you're a normal, just a patron of a brew pub, you are not allowed to take your beer outside and drink it?
Right.
Right, and if you purchase a growler, that is a sealed container, correct?
Correct.
So, right. So it would be, it would be open containers that are affected, right?
Right. Again, as far as consequences go, I think for us, it would be, you know, again, we're not going to necessarily go in there and instantly issue citations. It's really more about education and, you know, convincing people that, you know, this is not something that's tolerated or prohibited, that it's prohibited. But if we do issue citations after warnings are given, again, we have limited ability to follow up or limited teeth because of what I explained earlier about the problems we're seeing with the court and the jail.
Yeah, I'm in support.
I mean, as someone who has worked in the bartending industry and still does on occasion, I was under the impression that you couldn't leave the establishment with an open container beverage, so I see this as a very small change.
I support the concept, but as the chief is pointing out, you get down the road with that a little bit, and there really is no consequence to the consequences. It becomes just a paper, paper thing.
Well, I think, so, we really haven't talked about consequences a lot right now. I mean, we address it, we touch on it, we say fines, no fines, they can't pay fines, they show up to court, they don't show up to court, they don't have money to pay fines, all these issues about consequences being ineffective. Personally, I'm not willing to use that as an argument at this point against having ways to enforce, because, yes, there, some, it will have an impact on some of the behavior. It won't impact all the behavior, but it could impact a portion. If it impacted half of it, that would be that much less of it going on, just to, I would liken it to our ordinance about handing off from a vehicle to a pedestrian in a public right-of-way, that ordinance. You know, we did, we did that, and it stopped, because there, it's practically stopped out there. You're not seeing the same activity at McDonald's, because the community is, on the street becomes aware of it, and sees that that is not acceptable behavior. And there are those that will respect that ultimately. So that's, I just caution against going down that road. I think that enforcement, jail time, fines, all those things will sort themselves out over time. I know with the new jail coming in, we're going to have more capacity, and I'm guessing, it sounds like, and I hope, and I will encourage, if not, that there is good services when people go, you know, if they have drug, alcohol problems, mental issues, that they will be addressed very specifically in a very holistic and long, you know, long-term way, so that these people that are captured in that situation have that opportunity to improve. So that may help, too. And then, you know, we've talked about the idea of fine forgiveness, given the behavior of an individual is track being different, saying, okay, now we can lighten your burden, let's pull this out from under you, because you're making progress, you're going forward, you know, so carrot and stick sort of stuff. So I, again, I just wanted to address that specific issue, and I think that it's beyond us to really use that. We have to, if we're going to address behavior that nobody appreciates, that nobody should tolerate in public by anybody, whether they're homeless or not, you know, we should, we should do that. And again, the example of what we did for the library, what Director Pearson did for the library, a code of conduct. We expect people to behave within these socially accepted norms, and if you don't, you know, you're kind of not welcome, right? So we want that, I want to see that for those people who, maybe they don't have any place else to go, they are stuck on the streets, they, they have to spend their day somewhere. Okay, but just keep it down, right? Don't become an obstacle to people who are going about their business. Don't appear to be a threat. You know, there's a way to look like a threat, and there's a way to not look like a threat despite your circumstances. So it's just your stance when you're in life, so. Comments on that?
Seems like there's general consensus on this. We'll move on to the next one.
Okay. And we recognize, too, that we're not asking council to approve these, these are just conceptual ideas, that, you know, and obviously, there's going to be details, and it may come back looking different than what I'm explaining or what you see, and obviously, we'll cross our bridge when we get to it. I would just like to make sure I'm answering Counselor West's question. Deputy Chief Halverson, if you would clarify the current law on the open container, in case I have mischaracterized it?
So, yes, currently establishments that sell alcohol cannot allow open containers to go outside the building, except for those that are licensed to have, like, a seating area outside of their, outside of their business. But then, they're responsible to make sure that those open alcohol aren't leaving the licensed area.
Correct. Okay. That was my understanding as well, so thank you.
Thanks, sir. So, moving on. Okay, so obstruction ordinances. So again, this, some jurisdictions have had success with having ordinances that would prohibit blocking public rights-of-way sidewalks, roadways, different areas like that. Again, you know, I'm not pointing to anybody in particular, but we're, you know, all familiar with John downtown, and we've had, as much as John is not a problem, otherwise, we have had a lot of complaints from many of the business owners downtown. Many people called just because they're concerned about him, and we still go and have a conversation and make sure he's okay, but we do get concerns about, you know, his multiple shopping carts and his mobile recreational vehicle, or whatever you want to call it, that's, you know, taken up a significant portion of the area around a business. And from the business owner's perspective, it's limiting customers to come into their business. So we, you know, right now, we don't have the ability to, you know, force him to move. Generally speaking, he has been compliant, so I don't want to mischaracterize this, but that, there are other similar issues that we've seen with individuals in the property. He's not the only one.
And again, I'm in support of this.
Can you talk about, again, exactly how that works, again? What would be your criteria for what an obstruction is at any given time?
Well, for me, I guess I'd have to look and see, I haven't actually seen the wording from some of the other ordinances, but for me, it would be somebody that, you know, is blocking a substantial portion of a, you know, public or pedestrian thoroughfare, so that somebody that's, you know, in a wheelchair or coming through with a stroller, you know, has to either, you know, go significantly out of their way to go around the items. So something along those lines, that, you know, basically causing, you know, significant movement.
Okay. This wouldn't be like a group of people standing in the sidewalk?
No, not, because that would be loitering, in essence, and so we can't prohibit that. So it would just be the goods or their possessions.
All right.
Counselor, if you want, I could read very quickly. The Portland ordinance says it's unlawful for any person to obstruct or cause to be obstructed any roadway, curb, or sidewalk by leaving or placing any object, material, or article which may prevent free passage over any part of such street or sidewalk area.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Jimmy.
I mean, again, in thinking about this in the context of what's expected of downtown business owners, I mean, we have to get a sandwich board permit to not obstruct the sidewalk, so it's, it is, I'm trying to look at it in a diplomatic sense, so.
Okay. If there's no other comments on this one, it seems like, is everybody okay with saying there's general consensus to move forward? Okay. And the exclusion zone, as I recall, would say that if a person has committed an offense two or three times to be determined, I guess, within an area, then they would be excluded for a period of 90 or more days from that area. And then you also said that if it were a serious offense, like, you know, sexual assault or something, it would be one offense. I think that is completely reasonable and extremely fair.
I agree.
And Mayor, I will add that this is one of the ones that has, I don't know if controversial is the word, but it has had some challenges similar to some of the letters you received on the unlawful transfer ordinance. So just, you know, full disclosure, but most, there are still, there are many cities that are operating with this ordinance and have been for many years. I think Bend has been in place since 2015.
Yeah, and I wouldn't go on further than note that this is something that the council wished staff to pursue. This is one that most likely would generate the desire to have another work session, possibly to discuss more about, particularly looking at also staffing and some of those details.
Yeah, again, I'm all for addressing bad behavior, but, and I'd certainly like to know more about how this works and what, I'm glad that they've been out there for a while, so we can gain from experience of other municipalities and how it's worked for them and how they've refined it.
And just briefly, related to this, we hear a lot of anecdotal comments about many individuals not feeling safe on the River Walk. I don't know if it's realistic, if the police still has a bike patrol, because obviously you can't drive along the River Walk in most areas. So I just think a friendly police presence might cut down some of these behaviors. I don't know, maybe I'm pie in the sky, but I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Well, and thank you, Counselor. We have been looking for alternatives to spending, you know, an expensive officer to do some of these things, too, because they, you know, with limited resources, they're out there handling calls on a fairly regular basis. Again, as I mentioned the other day, we're looking at an intern from the college and perhaps putting her in uniform and putting in our little electric bubble car that we've had, and we've bought new batteries for, so I'd like to get that operational up and down the River Walk, just for the, you know, visibility, and this individual will call things in that don't look right, and driving that downtown. We just had a conversation this morning about bicycles, we may need to pick up a new one or two. And again, now that staffing has improved since the same time last year, we have some more capacity. Some of it may require some overtime to do that without drawing resources from other areas, but that is definitely something we're looking at. So we'd love to have higher visibility and the positive contacts, like I mentioned earlier. So thank you.
And I just want to use this moment to kind of reiterate the importance, I think, of lighting along the River Walk, too, which I think would be an initial upfront expense, certainly, depending on who owns that, the property. And also, to point out what Cindy Price mentioned at the last host meeting, is, this is, and of course, we all know this, especially the department heads, that it's not just a downtown issue. We're seeing a lot more activity, I know, around Pier 39, and kind of, certainly in talking with John, who's sometimes relocated out there, so just reiterating, you know, creating more awareness that it is on the east and west end of towns as well.
Okay, next topic.
So, let's see, the rest of my, I think, is really more work on our end. Again, you know, we're dealing with some resources, a lot of this stuff, it's either myself or the deputy chief, or we have to pull an officer in off the field to do some research. I suspect that there's lots and lots of good examples out there, that other agencies, other jurisdictions have already done, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We can also learn from failed experiments, too, as some of them have been in the news lately, and we've all had an opportunity to see those. So I think that's one of the areas we need to put some resources into, in terms of doing that kind of research, and maybe, you know, asking the college and looking at some of those things, too, that are less expensive. So anyway, that part is on us, we will explore some of these, or more informational in terms of just some of the more work that we'd like to do to find, again, like we talked, like you mentioned, Mayor, about alternatives to enforcement, some of the tools that we don't have right now, you know, for issuing citations and people not appearing, we need to find better ways to address that and hold people accountable.
As part of that, I wonder if, something you're probably already doing, but seeing whether others have found any creative ways to create consequences that are actually a deterrent. If somebody has come up with something somewhere that seems to work in that way, that would certainly be helpful.
Thank you.
So on these next, the bulletized items, maybe you want to go through those one at a time as well?
Well, this was one, actually, I was, I was, we were not looking for guidance, we were saying that these are things that we were going to do.
You're just looking to know if we want to say no.
Well, I mean, if there's something, if there's something that, something that...
I think they're all great ideas. I think extending the property watch program to public property is absolutely the right thing to do. It's too bad we missed it around the first time, and I know you've reached out to the Sunday Market folks and local business owners regarding the picnic tables, and they're all in support of removing those. So, yeah, march on, I would say.
And I just want to clarify on that, the picnic table issue, this all falls into the crime prevention through environmental...
the prime prevention through environmental design issue. Part of the concept is you look for design opportunities so that people feel safe and you don't create niches or nooks for activities to occur that maybe cause some problems. And then, and this is just a case where this is a nook, where some, there's activities that have been occurring that have been causing problems. And so it's trying to address this issue of removing this, the area is still there, but it provides, I mean, a place where, you know, that there's clear vision all the way through there.
And I don't disagree because I don't have a better idea, but there is something troublesome about having to remove what probably was put in as a public amenity initially in order to address the problem. It's sort of like.
Yeah, I will say that it's a bit of a remnant from when that whole area was a flesh platform going from Exchange Street all the way over to Duane. It's kind of a remnant of what was there before the, you know, when the Safeway slab was still in place.
So, the only thing that strikes me, I guess I just, a little surprised that, on the property watch thing, that the city, which needs to give permission to the police to watch our property?
So.
So, could you talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, so, I mean, this is a case where, you know, for property watch to occur, there is, the city has buildings and facilities that are just like Gimmery Shoes. And, you know, to be able to have that, that same ability to move somebody off, in off-hours, there'd be kind of the same approach. I'll tell you that there have been, it really has not been an issue until recently. And so, there's been some discussion as to where there are going to be different standards between different departments. And so that's why I said, hey, if this has become an issue in one particular facility, we should have the same standard all the way across city, the city buildings and structures.
So, does this fall in the same category as prohibiting camping on public property? I mean, it's, again, it's a public space, is it not? And aren't there legal issues on that? Apparent, I guess not.
No, because we actually amended the, the city council amended the city code last year to prohibit camping on public spaces.
Which, but just, so, people just hanging out isn't camping. So, that, again, I'm trying to equate the two. I just want to be clear, make sure we're not getting into someplace where we, this has been vetted, I guess, by yourself and staff to say that we're, we can clearly do this. And again, I'm still surprised that if it's public property that we have to go into property watch, that isn't already.
Yeah, you know, perhaps Counselor, I would.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding something.
I think one of the distinctions is we're talking about a trespass violation and so in order for us to trespass somebody, we have to have the permission of the owner. So that's pretty specific to trespass violations. And without the owner, in this case, the city, which would be probably the city council, would be the authorized person, it's not practical to call a council member, the mayor in the middle of the night, say, is it okay if we trespass somebody? Now, this could be a city attorney question, can that authorization be, you know, delegated down to even a police officer level, you know, that that person has that, the mayor's authority to do that? And that might be something we could explore, because I kind of thought about that before myself.
Yeah, I mean, it would be certainly, accomplish the same thing and it might be a simpler way to get there too. Just curious. But I'm not against the concept of, you know, Director Pearson just pointed out some issues at the library, people, were it staff entrance, people hanging out?
The staff entrance is appealing because of the two garbage cans that are there. And they tend to pull them in front of the staff entrance and then they're there all night and staff have walked up in the morning and somebody's there. You know, I will say in that case, we just tell them they can't be there or we need to be able, can't block the entrance.
And it's actually all entrances to the library.
Sure, sure, but the example that was given earlier is.
The other advantage to signing public properties up for the property watch program is it allows you to post them, you know, with that same placard that are on private buildings. And I've seen it myself, that simply posting that property watch placard with the rules underneath it does act as a deterrent. So I think that'll be beneficial. So even if it wasn't required to post it, just having it posted on the door really helps a lot.
And, sorry, a quick follow-up question. That explanation was really helpful about the trespassing violations. Would someone, would the type of behavior that would result in a trespass be something that would be considered to be, for instance, public drinking or aggressive behavior? Or would it just be the presence of individuals in a particular spot where someone, you know, necessarily didn't want them to be there?
Right, you would not need to have an additional violation in order to constitute a trespass if the owner simply does not want individuals on that property after hours or any time of day for that matter. Their authority is that we can trespass that individual. Again, you know, because of resources and all likelihood, we're simply going to move them on. It gives us the authority to contact them and move them on. I suppose in more aggravated circumstances, you know, it could result in a citation or an arrest if that person immediately returns, those kinds of situations. So that would be.
Thank you.
Hopefully answer your question. Well, one more point too, I'll just say for Counselor Brownson, is that Eric just reminded me too, part of the other reason that the property watch makes sense on public property is that the officer doesn't always know who has given permission to some individuals to actually be on the property as well. Library may have given a, you know, one particular individual, you know, an exception to be there, or there may be other examples like that in other departments in the city. So it would be difficult for them to confirm who really has the authority to be on that property or not. So by having that document advanced, you know, it pretty much gives the officer blanket authority to deal with that unless there's an exclusion. And then one more thing on the actual notice, the mayor mentioned, we're looking at now having color-coded ones so we know in advance, you know, if it's expired, because it's a renewal program that we renew every year. So the notice will be posted and if, for example, the 2019 will probably be green and the officer can drive by and see it without having to go confirm a date or go into the computer database in order to enforce the notice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's been a very productive session. I really appreciate all the work that went into the presentations and the work you do on an ongoing basis. You know, emphasize again to the community that this by no means was the city council's overall approach to homelessness in our community. We'll have a lot more work sessions in the future on different aspects of work that's ongoing to assist people suffering from homelessness. This was, this was our session on dealing with one tiny segment of the overall problem, which is that there's a small percentage of people, many of whom are suffering from homelessness, but it's a small percentage of those, that population that has been directly negatively impacting livability, quality of life, and our local economy. And I appreciate those who spoke, those who came today to listen and those who got up and spoke and your comments. And hopefully by addressing these issues, it allows us to put more of our resources and effort then into assisting the many homeless people that need and want assistance in our community.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could also, we were also looking for direction on the camping, the upcoming, whether we're going to move forward on that this summer. We could table that for another session if you'd like, in interest of time or have the conversation today. But we are looking for direction on that as well, whether we want to move forward on that, because I know that's going to be coming up sooner than later.
Yeah, and so my input would be to go ahead and continue as you did last year with the same process, the advanced notifications, reaching out ahead of time to all the community organizations so they know it's coming and so that the information is ready to give people that, hey, we're going to clear the campground on this date and here's, here's how you contact CCA, here's how you contact the warming center. So my guidance would be yes.
Yeah, I agree with that. And this session has been about putting out, getting some new sticks. And one of the things we haven't been able to talk to, and I hope we talk in the future a lot more about carrots and really positive solutions. I don't, it's really easy for, this is the easy stuff for the city, we get to do that. We can pass ordinances, we can prohibit things. It's a lot harder for us to help with services and getting people to services. So, that's one of the things I do appreciate about are the approach that we took with the camping, is wrapping it in with trying to give the opportunity, more opportunity for those that are willing to accept service.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that, what Mayor Brownson just said.
Mayor now.
Sorry, Counselor, whoops. And Mayor Jones, is that, you know, with every ordinance, I would love to see a potential solution. And I know that there are a lot of solutions that are already in place and we are certainly, I feel that the council is looking at ways to further support those and the work that, for instance, that Klatzup Community Action and Helping Hands does. And I know Chief Spalding, just in my many conversations with you, that a lot of what you do, if not everything, there is with heart, so there is a lot of consideration going into these ordinances and the way that they are implemented, which is why so many of them are easy for us to support. And I would certainly say that about how you've dealt with the camping situation, just the amount of effort on you and your staff's part in notifying people ahead of time and, again, looking at alternative solutions and places for people to go. I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. And Mayor, if I could just offer two caveats on this topic. Traditionally or historically, at least in my limited history here, we generally responded to the camping, you know, situation based on complaints. We haven't proactively gone out and sought the camps out. It doesn't change the fact that we still have concerns, you know, not only for our safety, the firefighter safety and the homeless individuals that are in the camps, you know, that's obviously a safety concern, but, and so typically if we get a call, we don't always know exactly where, so we're in a particular area and we typically will locate several camps. So, again, unless there's some additional direction, I mean, our philosophy would probably be similar, we're not going to go out there and aggressively, you know, track down encampments, but if we get complaints from people, you know, we want to be responsive to our community. So, we would do it with that. And the second caveat is that this is always going to be based on our resources, which are limited, not just the police department, but also Public Works and the other departments that assist us in these events. As you remember, last year, we took out four tons of garbage and, you know, so that there are problems associated with this and part of it's based on calls for service, weather, you know, and those kinds of things. So, we will, you know, work these as, you know, time and resources and weather and all those conditions hold out.
Very good, thank you.
One question. I also support that action. Is it possible to track what happens to the people who are removed from the woods, for example? I know we know, you mentioned that two individuals were put into permanent housing, hopefully.
Well, I don't want to put Elaine Bruce on the spot, but I'm going to put Elaine Bruce on the spot.
Well, and not, not. For what happened last year.
Oh, okay, okay.
As we move forward, undoubtedly, this, you will have some campsites you're going to need to remove individuals from. I'd be really interested to know if they seek service, what kind of service did they get and how many did not? I mean, they were given the option, they qualified for, say, placement at Helping Hands, but they chose not to use it. That would be really helpful for me.
Okay, no, and that actually would be relatively simple to do.
Oh, okay, great.
We do know the names of the individuals for the most part. I do know that two of them, last year, one of them had intended to go to Hawaii anyway and they're the one to Florida, so we knew that they had moved on, you know, but, yeah, we can absolutely do that.
Great, thank you.
You have another topic?
Yeah, so if you're ready to move on, there's one additional item that I'd spoke to the mayor about on a much, much, much lighter subject that I'd like to be able to get some council instruction on. And it deals with the fact we're moving into parade season this summer. I'm disappointed that former Counselor Cindy Price just left because this actually was a topic that was brought up last year by her. So we have two parades that are coming up this summer. One is the Pride Parade in June and then there's the Regatta Parade in August. I'm going to say that last year, Counselor Price asked the council how they wanted to participate with these parades. And there was a discussion kind of towards the end of the signup period for the Pride Parade, whether the council wanted to enter and it just didn't work out. But what, at the direction of council, we purchased a banner if the council wished to participate in that parade, which is going to be on July, excuse me, June the 8th. And then the next item is with regards to the Regatta Parade and Chief Crutchfield's going to probably be learning this for the first time. In the Regatta Parade, there's been a history where city councillors ride on top of the ladder truck during the Regatta Parade. And there was some discussion last year where the council wanted to be behind a banner entered in the parade as its own entry. So, we're just wanting to get some guidance as to whether or not, how we need to sign you up and whether or not there's any interest in participating in these events as the Astoria City Council.
I would love to do that, both. So I'm fully in support of us being in both parades.
And then specifically, Counselor Herman, it would be like, so for the Regatta Parade, for example, do you want to ride in an official vehicle or be behind a banner?
Well, yeah, we'll have to talk about that. That might be challenging, but where there's a will, there's a way.
Right.
So we could work out that detail later. But yeah, I mean, I think it could be worked around.
And then in the Pride Parade, I was planning to walk in it, as far, it's just a question of do we want to all walk together behind a banner or just be, because you may, for example, be.
I'm already signed up for both.
You're already signed up in a different group, but you won't be in a council group, you'll be in a different group.
Well, but I would be, I mean, I've done both parades for years, just as members of, a member of other organizations, but I would be super excited to be part of the council group in both, or both parades.
Yeah, I'm game except for Regatta. I'll be on the river or preparing to be on the river for Regatta, so.
So, yeah, I guess we'll just deal with the first, the June parade first, since that's the closest coming up.
We'll coordinate to get.
I'll be happy to walk behind a banner too, if my colleagues would like to do that.
Yeah, I'd like to walk together behind the banner.
Good.
Yeah, and last year at least, Counselor Price had asked whether or not there's interest in, you know, in having counselors and if there's anybody in the organization who also wanted to be able to participate. So we can coordinate that. We have, at least with Regatta, we have entries in Regatta Parade from the various departments. Parks has participated as an entry, the library has, so different departments have participated in those events as entries into that individually to be able to highlight their various programs. And of course, we have the fire department, the police department, and the public works staff, the street sweeper at the end, you know, for that event. So, okay, that provides me with the information I need.
Okay, and I'll just, one bit of information for the council, I'll just pass on, not asking for a response. I saw on social media that there's a group maybe gathering people to come to our May 6 meeting, the next meeting to encourage us to enact a ban on plastic bags. And just representing myself, not the whole council, I gave feedback that because House Bill 2509 seems to be progressing steadily through Salem, I would prefer personally not to spend staff resources drafting and enacting a local ordinance that'll just be superseded by the state ordinance. I'd like to follow the progress of HB 2509 and hopefully it just gets passed and then we're done.
I know it passed the House. I just read that today.
Okay, great.
I agree with you though.
So I don't want to waste staff time, that's just my personal view. So that, when that conversation comes up on May 6, if it does, then you'll already know how I feel about it. Thanks.
You bet. All right, thank you very much, we're dismissed.